I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order and then we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I don't see any citizens in the audience. Do we have any written comments?
No.
Thank you. And if we could have roll call, please.
Jamie Allen.
Here.
Ryan Dawson.
Here.
Ryan Ford.
Here.
Steve Rayner.
Here.
Steve Foster.
Here.
Here.
Harry Cross.
Here.
Thank you. If I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda at all length.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Only listen to our superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. First off tonight, we have Mr. Matt and I from Navigate to give us our construction update.
All right, good evening. Stay in here and go through the PowerPoint. Yeah, so we're just going to give you just a quick update on all things property projects. So Mark Twain renovation update and what's coming up this summer with McGrath Phase Two and kind of what we are here to look at. So with that, we'll do a project update, look at the budget update for Mark Twain, and then just go through kind of what the timeline is coming up for McGrath and finish up with any questions. All right, so Mark Twain, so that whole entrance there is now covered up by a new addition. So real quick, as probably many of you have seen driving by, that whole addition is starting to get closed up. We have glass going in on a lot of those openings. The two big openings were kind of left out where some stairs, metal stairs went into the building this last week. Our roofing for both that addition and the connector is now dried in. It's not 100% complete, but when I, in construction, we always refer to a dry-in day. That means when it rains, we should be in the dry. So that's kind of where we're at with the roofing progress. What's left is just the sheaves on the slope roof. They have all the like water barrier in place. As I mentioned, the exterior aluminum windows, those are in the process. And then they're going to wrap up with that front entrance way where the big opening is on the left. I mentioned the steel stairs. Most of the other steel work is all done. They're wrapping up with a lot of rooftop unit supports. And then the mason is right now wrapping up the third manure work on the main entrance. So they should be done probably by the end of next week with the masonry brick. And then everything in the, if you look at the photos, and we'll look at them here in a second, everything in blue, it's like a blue wall above the brick. That's the air barrier. And all that area is going to be an ethos. It's like a, kind of what we have at McGrath. Some of that is kind of like a stucco wall. But that's going to go on top of all that blue paper barrier. And that work will happen here probably in the next few weeks. We'll start. Ameren Inspire, I just threw them in there that we are hooked up with gas. Ameren was supposed to be on site yesterday. I can only imagine it was the storm that came in Friday was pushing them back. They're notorious for, you know, taking care of the customers that are out of power. I don't know how many people are out of power, but they're probably taking care of them and then they're going to come and set the transformer. So they have the transformer. Easy to come and set it. And then electrician will hook up all the power, like the power to the building. So that's a big milestone because we're going to be due to get our new rooftop units set at any time. So once those are set, they can be powered on and really start to condition the inside and prepare for getting the rest of it finished. So inside the building, a lot of the renovation area is well underway with taping of drywall. As you know, the 1930s building was a lot of just plaster. So one hurdle we've been getting over is 100-year-old plaster was pretty brittle and we took stuff off the wall. Even some of the walls that are, you know, up to a window height, it's like the wall, the plaster was just falling out. So repairing a lot of that, a little more plaster repairs than we anticipated. But the plaster repair guy, I think, is just about done with that. And then get ceilings going and flooring. So the rest of the interior, all your mechanical, electrical, plumbing guys are continuing with their rough ends. And really should be working from renovations out into that new addition space now that we're dried in over there. So we're still anticipating substantial completion in June, end of June. That will be when we create our punch list. We're working with facilities to try to turn over some of the renovation areas a little sooner just because those are a little less, you know, with the activities and we can try to turn some of those spaces over, start to punch in those out with the architects and just give us a little more room to possibly move some stuff in to the building as well. So when we're moving, our plan is in July. We have our furniture that's on order with color art. So that's planned to come in July. And then staff, obviously, start moving their stuff in in August. And we were just talking before the meeting, we're trying to schedule some new FAQ meetings with staff and that kind of stuff on moving out of the old McGrath and what they need to do there and then when they can anticipate building a bit here. So that's kind of the plan over the next really five, six months where you get that, you know, six-month timeframe. So I'm excited. Some photos. So like I said, you know, this is that new addition, the storm shelter. The blue stuff, that's all going to be where the ethos will be installed. All the brick work down below is complete. It just needs to be washed, as you can tell. And then the masons are actually wrapping up around that entryway on the west side. So this is the west face, entryway. The masons are actually moved over to here. I think this was taken about a week back. And I would say kudos to Tony on his updates on his, on your guys' website. He takes pretty incredible photos. I mean, they take some lessons from him, but I wish I could do some of these photos here. But yeah, so that's kind of where we're at here. We had a site meeting with the site contractors today in ICS to try to work on a plan to get the site going in the next couple of weeks. So that will really start to, you know, get a lot of the site stuff in this, mainly this front entryway because that has a big courtyard just to the right there where that cone is, is a little planter box, which is kind of one of the features of that, that front courtyard. So that foundation has been poured. And that'll start with a lot of the site work here in the next few weeks. So these are those metal stairs that go in, in that entryway. So they set these last week. I think they were putting in the handrail, bar rails around there today when I was out there. So a little bit of welding. This is in the, inside the library space. So they, they got it framed. They were really just waiting for it to be dried in before we start putting drywall on the walls. So that's kind of in the condition that's at. That'll start really getting closed up here in this drywall. Breesway. So this was, you know, the connector between all the buildings. Lots of coordination, lots of just unknowns and unforeseen stuff happening in this space just to kind of close that area in. But it's, you know, in a spot now where it's dried in, the roof is on, there's a clerestory window along that, I guess it's the east side of that space. And the tuckering contractor is in there washing down all that old brick that would be exposed. So it's going to, you know, really give a fresh look. You can all see the original, you know, exposed building once it's all set down. So this is just a snapshot. This was in the new art room. So they have framing of a lot of your in-wall electrical. You can see some packing or whatever that put, case work. And that, oh, I think that area is already starting to get more drywall. They're locking it right now. This is one of the kindergarten rooms. So framing the two rooms on the top side of the photo are the toilet rooms or the, I think, one for the kindergarten toilet room and then the staff bathroom on the right. So along in that room. This is in the admin space or the principal's office, I think, is there on the left. Where the photo's taken is kind of that central little commons or office. It'd just be an office space for general purpose. So we got insulation going in the walls, some drywall up high. So this is back over in the 1930s building. This is the second pool restroom, pulled, rebuilt. So all the new, all new plumbing, drains, all the water lines. And they've got the, the rock on the walls ready for getting tiled in. All right, so the budget, budget updates. I guess first off, any questions with any of the construction itself? So budget update wise, I think it's been a while since we presented, but the, so again, the first column for post-bid budget, this would, this would have been at bid day, our low bidder plus all of our owner contingencies is at top row. So construction cost, the 13, nine would have been our bid day, bid plus owner contingency. So the reason it's, so it's gone from post-bid budget to our current budget, we're about a million lower than that. And the big, the big, the big two pieces there were the volume engineering, 600,000, you know, that we took out after bid. So that was after the bid day. That was that change order one. And then there was around 400,000 dollars in that contingency that we kind of decided that it's, you know, probably not going to need to be spent. So we reallocated some of those funds just to the total budget for all projects. And so that's, that's really the big, that's really the big reason why there's that delta between our on the construction cost line from post-bid budget to current projected cost. We do, in the projected costs, we do still have a contingency. We haven't reallocated everything. But now that we're, you know, in a place where we're dried in, we won't have a whole lot of unforeseens in the ground. But it does still leave us with, I think it's still six figures worth of contingency, right around 100,000 dollars. So that's in there. So special, special construction wise, this would have been like our abatement cost. Our abatement guy, that was in there, fixture, furniture fixtures and equipment. This was mostly the furniture. Furniture actually came in a little less in our budget. So that's where the delta is there and all that furniture's on order. It'll be delivered in July. Professional services, so that's all consulting, designer consulting costs. Technology, we had, the reason there's a delta there down to zero is we really found out that we purchased most of the equipment along with McGrath. So we had some funds budgeted, but it was a good thing, ended up finding out that all the equipment was purchased at the same time McGrath did. So zeroed out there. And then the last line item for miscellaneous and even cost, the 100,000 dollars, this is the school district. They did a good job of finding some grant funding. I think 25 of it was for some kitchen equipment. And then there's a 100,000 dollar grant for safety, security entrance grant money. So that was a big win for the district. So kudos to Mr. North for finding that, but it was him or Grant there. So at the end of the day, so you can see projected cost, we're right around 14, five is where we feel pretty comfortable we're going to come in at.
Good question on professional services. On big construction jobs, aren't they normally sometimes based upon the construction, like the overall contract price? And so with the contract price going down 100, a million dollars, I would expect that the professional fees to come down as well because it's, you know, if we're paying off a percentage. So I'm just kind of wondering why that went up when everything could be percentage-based and should be dropping.
Yeah, so some of that, so it is, you're right. It's a percentage of the construction cost. That's the, that's the architect's contract. It's a six and a half percent or whatever's a construction cost. I think in the, the owner contingency doesn't really, that's kind of outside of that. So when we took out, you know, some of that owner contingency, I'd have to, I'd have to look into where we ended up, like where we think we're going to end up and how that percentage is. But I know it's perfect. Based on, you know, the post-bid or probably bid day totals or.
I just would think if you, we rip a million dollars off and they're not having the architect up for some of that, that they shouldn't get paid for that. But I mean, contract's a contract, so I don't know if it's pre-bid or post-bid.
Right. And some of, some of that is, you know, not necessarily, you know, it was, they're just like, they've already fulfilled their design. It was, it was more of a, you know, value, when we say volume engineering, we're talking about, you know, replacing, instead of replacing some of the roof, you know, we're going to go with keeping the, you know, keeping the roofing. So it really wasn't a design item. So that's kind of where we look at it. If it, if it, if it really was less scope for them to not have to complete their design, that would look at that. But I can circle back with them.
Yeah, just to be a pain, because if the, because we wouldn't have paid them 1.1 million if we didn't do the project. So they hadn't done any, you know, they had done some preliminary work, which we would have paid them for. So they would not have had 1.1 million of sunk cost until the construction was actually in place, I would think. Because they wouldn't have built, you know, built the whole project and then said, oh, we were changing it, you know. I'm, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here. I understand that you're not them and don't know, but I'm just, they would not have put the work in to say, here's our billing regardless of what you do to the building because they wouldn't have started until we said, we signed the contract and they knew the terms. I mean, it is what it is. I just am trying to understand why that's up, so.
Is that, is that all architect fees in professional services?
No, it's, it's our fee, the architect's fee. It's the geotechnology, material testing, like your abatement, air monitoring. So it's any, any type of third-party, you know, consulting. But what I, what I, what I can do is give you a better breakdown of what that, all I can do is.
Can I say this tongue-in-cheek? You're just throwing the architect under because it's your fees that just went up half a million dollars, right? You're just, you're laying it at the architect's feet because they're not here. It's all right. I like that style.
We're, you know, we're monthly, so. Trying to get us in the stall. But no, I mean, that's, that's definitely fair.
Thank you.
So just one, one quick question. So we're about four months out and it looks like everything is going on track. Is there anything that we need to be aware of that could potentially put our timeline at risk?
Um, so, I mean, you know, obviously springtime weather with the site work. I mean, you know, right now, we've actually been pretty fortunate the last couple of weeks. We had a little snafu on Friday, but it's 70 degrees today. So I think it looks like it's decent next week. I don't know if Grant might say otherwise. The Glazer, Missouri Valley's actually gone out of business. They filed bankruptcy last week. Now they are committing to finishing all their projects. As you can see, they've completed most of the windows. They have the two big openings in the front to complete. I don't want to say they're, you know, that's, is it a certain issue, but it is enough of an issue to, you know, be a little bit worried. If they don't have, if, if something were to happen, they can temp in those openings with like just plastic just to get some kind of going. But right now, ICS owes us a plan on what is going on with finishing that, their scope out.
Okay.
If, if Missouri Valley isn't able to do it, then we'll have to hire another, like a glass company to come in and complete those openings. All the material has already been purchased. So I think it's really just a matter of, you know, getting their hands on, you know, the material and getting a schedule for completing the work.
Is that material owned by the glazing company though at this point until it's put together and?
Yeah, well, the, I mean, the school district, you know, technically owns it. Because it was, some of the material was, you know, stored and paid for as store material.
So that was my only question, Matt, that I was wanting you to circle back with ICS. Are we confident that that's in their, that's in their warehouse, large front windows?
Yeah, I mean, I, we have store material invoices and photos of it being there.
Okay.
So what they, what they owe us is a plan of pay. At what point, you know, because they, they order these aluminum frames in stock lengths. Then they frame them in their shop, cut them to the length, they build them in their shop and they ship them out to the job site. So what I'm not sure is what point of that fabrication in the window they're at. And that's, that's what we're waiting on. And this, this all transpired like Thursday last week, Monday, Thursday. So still kind of new, but you know, we haven't hit the panic button yet. We just want to, you know, know that it's still coming. And they're still, you know, committed to the project. And they, that's what they verbally said is they still are committed to finishing the projects that they have. But that would be from a manpower standpoint, I believe, or.
Right, yeah. So it, so it sounds like the contingency plan is to potentially put in some sort of plastic windows. And then i- if, you know, kind of, I'm just thinking worst case, because we want to get, you know, everybody moved in there as quickly as possible. So worst case, we do some plastic type of windows while we can order or reorder those windows. What does that lead time potentially look like for us?
Right. Well, I don't, yeah, hopefully I'm, we're not going to talk, we're not even going to get into the reordering of material.
I hope not too.
Yeah.
I think, I think the more likely scenario would be we've got to find another company that would do the install. If we have to do anything at all, is that fair of the scenario?
Yeah, yeah. If they can just hand over the material and then somebody else complete the fabrication, that would be kind of plan B.
Okay.
Obviously, let's just let them do it.
Yep.
The plastic part of it would just be something that they can temporarily close those openings off so they can start conditioning that space inside so you can put finishes up.
Okay, yeah, that's cool.
So we have, you know, five months to get that space finished position. And it's hard to do that with giant walls in the sun.
Right.
But we have, we have our owner meeting tomorrow. So hopefully get some more information. I talked to their project manager today who was the CFO of ICS was on the phone with their, their owners trying to get it resolved. So it is a, a big deal. You know, it's up the food chain of ICS.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for the. So McGrath Phase Two. So obviously, end of last year, we ordered the general contractor to bottom shell construction. Abatement is going to be alloy. And between the two, we had, we had some pretty good cost savings from what we were projecting there. But the reason we bid those out so early was so that we could have this time to get the planning and all the materials lined up. They are buying out all their subs. We had a coordination meeting on the eighth of February with all their major subs. Some of their major subs are lined up, ready to go. Still working out just some of the finer details of, you know, once school is out of session, you know, getting some stuff moved out that we need to before the demo or the abatement guy can actually get in. But we're hoping sometime that we did 27th of May, the abatement can begin. I have June 3rd listed here. But in that coordination meeting, we talked about maybe getting them in a couple of days early. And then demo, we have slated for July, another one of those. If we can get some of the building, or say half a building abated, then the demo guy can get started sooner. So we're still working through some of those details. But right now, it's, you know, looking like their, their contract is supposed to be up in October. So I put November because we still have the playground to put in for ECC. So probably around that November timeframe. Have everything 100% wrapped up with Phase Two.
Do we have any backup plan for a playground from August to November for the ECC? Like right now, I know you guys have done a great job as far as using the outdoor classroom, but there's probably going to be lots of heavy material and machinery going on. Do we also have any concerns about that while there's going to be kids out and about on the property?
Yeah, so we're, I can speak to that. So we're actually, what we're going to do is we're going to move a temporary play area for those few months. We're going to move it over, we're going to add a fence, but we're going to fence in that routine in-wall area outside the storm shelter. We're out. So that we'll have a locked area for the kids to be able to play in. It's safe and they're not near the traffic. There's not any construction at all. And we'll just set up some temporary things for them to play on and things like that. So that's the plan for that.
Andy's been working with Kristen and we've got a backup for that.
And I think your other question was about separating, you know, McGrath with the construction site. Like we did with McGrath Phase One is we'll have fence, a construction fence that's, you know, set back far enough. They, they have to maintain that fence. So having a further separation of construction.
Plus the plan is demo will be completed by the start of school.
So it will be, I mean, there'll still be some heavy equipment on the site.
Right.
Can they play on the equipment?
Only on the weekends, only on the weekends.
Okay, well, they have it out at Magic House and it seems good enough for them, so.
It is, it is, you know, some entertainment.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Uh, next up, we have E. Hartnett. Give us an update on the HVAC unit for the gymnasium.
And then also, I guess, can we have a tour pretty soon of Mark Twain? You know, maybe do something for a board meeting or something. I have, I don't know. Has anybody been in since any of this has started?
We had one tour a few months ago, but it hasn't been a while.
We were thinking, uh, what, around April that we thought it would be.
Probably first week of April when it's more temperate out. Probably first week of April when it's more temperate out. I guarantee we have some decent weather.
It's just going to look more like the building than, even though it's on schedule and going really well right now. There's still some areas that look very, you know?
Quite muddy.
Yeah, that too. So we can definitely, we thought we'd schedule something for the board and/or the facilities. Maybe in April time period.
Hello, everybody?
Hi, Andy.
Well, we're not just talking in here, so if we're talking too low, you guys need to tell me.
Okay.
All right, so, I'm here to talk about the replacement of the gym HVAC units for the large gym at Portwood High School. These were originally, you know, first of all, we'll talk about. So, uh, we're going to talk about the replacement plan for this, this summer. We're going to talk about the current state of the units that are up there, the reason for the replacement, the current need, and then we'll talk about pricing. Everybody was talking about that. I don't have as many cool pictures as Matt and I. We're going to get a drone or something. So these are the current McQuay units that are on the rooftop of the large gym. They've been up there for about twenty-five years. They are at the very, very end of their life. We have done a lot of work on them. The current state of the units, there are two McQuay, forty ton HVAC units, about twenty-five, twenty-six years old. The support for these units, like parts and things, especially electronics, is virtually, you know, obsolete. There's, there's almost no, no support on these things. When I started in twenty twenty, we did a lot of extensive work to make sure the heat would work on these things, because the heat was not working on them properly. We were able to get that going, but they don't go so far. And they are excessively noisy, so you want to be good neighbors and want to keep the noise down. The reason why we have more of an immediate need now is we had a power outage. I don't know if you all know about the power outage at the end of January, we knocked it up. What was it, eight hundred or nine hundred of us out of power? When the power came back on and it, it surged and it took out the computer boards on those, on those units. We were able to get one unit back up and running. It took a long time, but we were able to get it back up, and it is currently running, but the other one is not. The nice thing about that is those units are big enough for just one to take care of a whole, whole space. It's more for redundancy to have two. Now, these were not replaced in renovations, they would be, and they were rolled into the five-year plan a couple of years ago, so. The replacement units, they will be two Dyken Remo units, they're forty tons each. The, the nice thing about these is their turnkey, so they're an exact fit, and they actually are within a fraction, an inch of the other units that are up there now. We will not have to, we will not have to adjust any of the steel beams that are on the roof. There will be no invasive cutting into the walls and no heat duct work. It's basically set, set up with power and then, they're, they're done. Which is really nice. And plus, considering the fact that we use the gym all the time, we don't want to have a lot of downtime with any of that kind of stuff, so. And they're much quieter and more efficient than the McQuay, uh, McQuays that are already in place. Current installation budget is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven. There's a five-year parts warranty, including the compressors, that's pretty general with any equipment. A ten-year heat exchanger warranty, which is a good warranty. Heat exchangers tend to, so, you know, they, they get moisture and then they get rusted out and things like that. So that ten-year warranty is pretty good. And a one-year labor service warranty. Part of this proposal is, is, the proposal is made up as, as, we're part of the Omni Partners co-op, which allows us to do these kind of turnkey purchases if we need them. The lead time on these is about thirty-nine weeks to get. Now, we've been told that if we do agree to the contract, they can't open up an assembly line for us and we'll start loading those pretty darn quickly, and they might be able to cut it back down to nineteen weeks. But that's, you know, we're going to hold them to thirty-nine, hopefully a couple of months soon. So that's, that's that. Does anybody have any questions?
What's the planned useful life?
Useful life is usually fifteen or twenty, and we are, we weigh on that.
If we have a motion to approve this, then we'll have discussion?
I move that we approve the contract amount for the HVAC replacement.
Second?
Discussion.
What do we have on the middle school as far as equipment?
It's, as far as the classrooms?
Yeah.
Uh, they are PTAC units, or they're like a PTAC unit, but they're like wall units that are water source heat pumps.
So that's what's right outside the cafeteria?
No, well, yes, so those are actually the cooling towers for the water source heat pumps. And those actually cool the entire school, like classrooms and other areas.
So they're compatible, or they're the same? So will we be all across the middle school, high school, all same equipment? Are we still piecing things together and having different?
It, it'll be same equipment. It won't be pieced, pieced together. Same building automation system.
Is this one of the sections that's not really working, because it's freezing in here?
So, yeah, no, this, this section's working, but, but I actually turned the cord on, because I was worried that it was going to be too hot.
But that's a great, that's a great question about the system, because that is, you know, going back several years. And when Andy came to the district, we had multiple different operating systems running. So that's been a big push, is that we're going into these to, to get on one common system, so.
And I'll also make another comment, this is not our, this is not like our last HVAC project that we have. We have another one happening this spring. Auditorium HVAC is getting replaced. We actually are getting that through an insurance claim, which is saving us about two hundred thousand dollars.
Full, fully covered?
Fully covered, so that's a good thing. So we're hoping to get that in, if we can do it after the musical and the tournament before graduation. It's like a five or six day project, so that's exciting. And then, a tad on the mass presentation, which was much cooler than mine. Part of, not part of the project for Mark Twain, but part of our capital project is we are actually going up to bid for new roofs on the, uh, new flat roofs on the other parts of the Mark Twain building. Cause they, they do need it, and that was part of our capital plan, was to, was to replace those roofs. And the right reason to it was, we do it this year so we could kind of make a seamless transition with the construction. And we're not just, it doesn't look like we're just doing construction all the time. So, what we don't want to do is.
So the, just to reiterate though, we had planned this, that's in the five-year plan. That five-year plan has been shared with Matt. Matt has incorporated that, and that's all part of, when we set the tax rate, it's all of that is part of that.
Yes.
Do we have any, so I know you mentioned the auditorium. Any other units, are we done then with the middle school, high school?
We have auditorium, we have gymnasium, and actually, this, this space is getting redupped as well.
So when we did the middle school, high school, just so I'm clear, we talked about taking some of that out of scope, and we put that in. And then that was covered through the capital allocation on the tax rate. Same thing, as you mentioned, with the roof over at Mark Twain, correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so, yeah, we're not, we're not really done with HVAC here, but we're starting to see light at the end of the tunnel.
But there's nothing unplanned, all of this is planned, part of the five years, set in the tax rate, already accounted for with our tax rate.
And, and the expense is right in the ballpark of what you anticipated, or?
Well, no, when, when we first started coming up with the five-year plan, it was before the escalation of materials and labor. So we did have to go back and kind of make some tweaks with that, which is something that's totally out of our control, but.
While staying within budget.
Yeah, we feel like we got a pretty good handle on that. Keeping up to date with, you know, professional service fees and all that, so.
So where we're lifting these old units out of, putting new in? How is that roof? Because are we going to need to replace that right now? We are going to be putting stuff, new stuff on, and then have to do some other maneuvering to bring that roof up? Or where are we on the roof right now, where we're putting new stuff?
That's the beauty of this whole thing, so these units right now, the units that are on there now sit on top of steel beams, and they're not really on the roof. They're on beams that are on top of the roof. And the new units will just sit right where they, the new units were. So we will not have to do any kind of retrofitting of the roof or anything.
But how, what condition is the roof in?
It's, it's a good.
Okay.
I guess with the bidding, is it no bidding, I guess? It just seems like a big project. I found one online for sixty-five thousand, never been used. I buy now, it says opening bid fifty thousand for a new one.
You're going to put it in?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, like, how this call works.
It is a, it is a big project. It's expensive. There's one issue, there's, like I mentioned before, it's not invasive. We only can get it in the engine area, we only can get it in the protective area.
No, I guess I'm just wondering just how, like, how we knew that this person that told us that four thirty-eight was the right price, like?
Well, and, and one other thing that we're looking to do is there's a test program too, that can give us a secondary price.
Yeah, it's always tough on a, on a sole source. Now, we did look at what some other options would be in getting into the design and, and all those components, and it was going to be higher. But then the fact that we're going through the consortium on this.
Okay, that's what I kind of wanted to.
It's, it's one of those things, it's like, you, you, you really, you know, I'm not a big brand loyalty guy. I do, I do like the better deal, but at the same time, what's the factors, you know? What's the time factor, what's the, you know, what, how much, what are we going to be affecting while we do this? And I talked to other people, some facilities around town that have these exact units, they've seen the light.
And just one, one last question, the, the vendor TMI, how long have they been in business? I wasn't?
They've been in business for a very long time.
They have, okay.
They've gone through several different.
Names or?
Names, yeah, but they've been around for a while. And they kind of have the market color on the value of it.
Okay. So they'll, they'll support the warranty then?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right, any other questions for Andy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me have a stay.
Okay, and carry a statement, so that is approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, this is just an informational item, election communication. Lindsay, did you want to speak to this one, or you want me to?
I'm happy to speak to it. So we did not have anyone who decided to run for our two open seats for the school board election on April second. So then that leads us to have, we will still have an election, but it's for a write-in candidate. And so folks, if they're interested, I can read this out so that we have all the details. But we've put together an informational sheet that went out through Parents Square, and we had some interest in the school board positions, so that's great. And you can find, is this posted on our website as well? Tomorrow, it will be posted on the website, so I'm going to go ahead and just read it tonight, and then it'll be posted tomorrow on our website. So two school board seats open for writing candidates. The Brentwood School District encourages qualified residents to consider running for the Board of Education. No district residents filed for the two open three-year terms on the school board during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four election cycle. According to Missouri law, an election must be conducted to provide an opportunity for writing candidates to be elected for school board service. The election is scheduled for Tuesday, April second. Please note that writing candidates will not be listed on the official ballot or publicly posted at polling places. Because no candidates are on the ballot for the school board election, potential writing candidates do not need to file a declaration of intent with the St. Louis County Board of Elections, and votes will be counted for every name properly written in. In accordance with Missouri law, writing candidates must meet the school board candidate requirements to be eligible for school board service. To keep our community informed on the upcoming election and to assist writing candidates in informing the community of their candidacy, we encourage candidates to notify the Board of Education of their intent to serve before Friday, March twenty-ninth. Qualified and verified individuals who notify the school board of their intent to serve will be invited to complete a short questionnaire. Responses will be published in a special edition of our district e-newsletter, which will be emailed to all staff and families on the day of first. Writing candidates interested in notifying the school board of their intent to serve may do so by scheduling an appointment with Kate Hastings at katehastings@brentwoodmossschools.org or three one four nine six two four five zero seven. Appointments will be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis at our district administrative offices, which are now located here at the high school, twenty-two, twenty-one High School Drive, during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM. Please note that all district offices will be closed till the week of March eighteenth through the twenty-second for spring break. Please contact the St. Louis County Board of Elections office at three one four six one five eighteen hundred or vote at STLCountyMo.gov if you have any questions about the process for write-in candidates. So again, this will be posted on our website. If people have questions, they can contact Kate. And we'll, we'll have a write-in election on April second for two school board seats. Any questions?
Is there any particular reason that we wouldn't be emailing staff or families until the day before election? And I'd hate for some reason, for something to happen and they don't go out, or something like that. Is there any way to move that up at least? Or is there a method to the?
I think we were trying to get so close to the election date to allow people to, to sign up. And so that's why that was chosen, we thought about doing a little bit earlier, but we didn't want to have a cutoff too far in advance from when the election is held. I don't know if we have any additional thoughts on that?
Well, I think we were just trying to come up with the most equitable way to do it that would be defensible after, you know, after the fact, if it was challenged by anyone who kind of came in later and didn't have that opportunity, so.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. Uh, next up, we got Andrew Miller with our calendar.
Good evening, everyone. So we've got a group of teachers and staff members, and I guess this trust will help us out to make some calendar recommendations. It's always a dicey proposition, trying to get everyone on the same page. But I think the teachers and staff, the community seem proud with what we're going to present tonight for you guys to look over and hopefully approve. Because it can be contentious, I think the process is just very important. So here's just kind of the process we did. We made sure we gathered data from the community to try to get a true representation of what people wanted. We also got information from all the districts around us. We then put together a diverse team of stakeholders. That team then got together, looked at the data, tried to make some decisions, talked about what they thought were important. They then, you know, disbanded and kind of gathered more information, came back together, and then made some, made a final calendar, which we recommend tonight for you guys to approve. So the survey data, just giving the board members like an idea of how many people. We did get a lot of responses, we got four hundred and thirteen responses. When the teachers and staff members, community members were looking at it, we did kind of disaggregate it. Just talking about, okay, you know, like, obviously, students always want everything in their calendar as much as possible. But basically, people were forced to choose what was most important, whether it was getting out before Memorial Day, or having like an additional fall break, some of the other things, you know? It's kind of a. or having like an additional fall break, some of the other things, you know, it's kind of a give and take. And so I'll go, later, we kind of shared the results of the survey. Here was our committee. So there were parents, board members, teachers, staff members. Everybody, you know, shared equally. And one thing I didn't talk about is we did the consensus for voting to make sure that everybody could agree to it and to try to keep us all together and that way nobody was upset by the outcome. So when we were looking at the survey data, we're looking at start and end times, high school finals. The one trend that really stuck out is that the stakeholders wanted to continue to get out before Memorial Day. That was the most important thing was always, we'd rather get out before Memorial Day than have additional breaks. So we'd rather get out before, you know, Memorial Day than like change or at more media or anything like that. So we really looked at all the calendars around us, trying to also be in line with what they were doing. In the end, we basically are keeping the same structure that the current calendar we have. So we have the exact same number of full PD days, we have the exact same number of half PD days, same number of school days. The few things that we did is, once we kind of agreed on this, is we made sure we were lined up our spring break with the districts around us. And then we moved around the PD days to try to ensure that it was best for, you know, families who are watching kids and also teachers learning. Things like we moved the compensation date to the day after Halloween. Because we know that it's always like a tough day, it's a Friday. So just depending on how the calendar falls is why we made the decisions we made. And so here is our final recommendation. I know, hopefully you guys have also the PD attached in your documents of what it looks like. It's a little hard to read up there. But like I said, it's the same number of minutes as our current calendar. The other thing, you know, the school ends before Memorial Day, which was a very strong preference. So we couldn't really add in extra days. The one compromise that we made is that sometimes teachers looked at two weeks for parent-teacher conference. Some teachers prefer it in one week and not, you know, spread it out over two. So this year, they wanted to try a compromise where you can see in October, parent-teacher conferences is spread out over two weeks, but in March, it's just over one week. So that way we can kind of see what works best for teachers and if there's a preference for future calendars. So I don't know if you guys can see if you want me to. So this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll move that we approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
All right, discussion? Do we ever consider doing a two-year calendar? Did we talk?
So, yeah, so I think the plan was, the plan is actually to make sure that we're all good with this calendar. If there were questions about specific dates, which sometimes comes up, it's easier for you guys to like approve it. And then we're actually planning on getting together again in April to like do the same formula, but then move around and get another year's calendar to bring back more approval from you guys. That way we can get two years' notice.
Yeah, just, I know Carrie, you've sat on this a while. Was the process better this year or do you think it's the same or different or?
I think it went really, really well. You know, Andrew, this was his first time going around. So he really kind of started from scratch and, and did a lot of things. And there were some new people, so, you know, it wasn't always the way it was always done kind of thing. So no, I think it went really well. There's a lot of history that goes behind it, so, you know, the same questions come up a lot of times. And so we just basically explain why. And hey, that is a great idea, but we've looked at it for the last ten years and it just doesn't work out kind of thing. But no, I think it went really well. He had a lot of activities for us to do. Before, we used to, we got it down to, the person came, they gave us like four calendars. We looked at them and figured out which one were we gonna do. This year, he came a couple, we looked at them, then we had manipulatives and made our own and then went back and forth. So I think we met three times.
Yeah. But finally they were down.
Right. So, you know, I think, you know, definitely getting a second calendar sooner than later is better because our families do really like that. We had not done that for years. And then we did a, I think it was last year. So I think, you know, that's definitely something we gotta make sure we get done sooner than later. But no, I think the process went really well. I think everybody was pleased, I think everybody felt their voices were heard. You know, we have not in the past done the one week versus the two. And so we decided this year we would just listen to all stakeholders and do that because it's just kind of been like, no, this is the way we've always done it. So that we can have a, a clear view of, was it really a good idea or was it not? You know, and be able to.
Well, I appreciate Carrie on there because sometimes teachers like, well, let's just cut off five days. So like, you know, we're really representing the parents' needs as well and hoping to move the conversation along with somebody who's done it all this time, so.
I think the only thing we, we lacked this year, and I did talk to Andrew about it, is we need to make sure that the meetings are not always at four o'clock. We have made it like, one night it's four, the next night it's five-thirty. So that when you do have parents, they're not having to take off every single time. So that we're looking at all the stakeholders at the meetings and respecting their time. So that is something that we'll need to bring back into the, the meetings. I'd say we're all right at four o'clock, at three fifteen. So, but no, I think it went really well.
Well, I appreciate you putting the efforts into that because that's not, I could, I couldn't do it. Thank you.
You're not good with calendar?
No.
I do think one thing I will recommend and I think we need to look at, and we used to do it when I was growing up, is if we look at snow days, you know, we're in a situation now, like maybe we look at, we don't have the Friday off before spring break or we don't, you know, we always liked as parents and as kids to not have to tack it on to the end of the year. So even though those things are planned, that's something I think we need to be flexible on and maybe be a little bit creative on, you know, and just know that that could be an option. So teachers and parents know that, hey, maybe President's Week and we don't get that Friday off before, but it'll still keep you at your before Memorial Day getting off.
All right, any other questions for Andrew? Okay, all in favor of the calendars, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, we'll look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up, we have Dr. Regent and Dr. Tripphammer for our first look at the Unified Arts Curriculum. So we won't vote on this tonight. You gonna make it till July one?
Well, he doesn't want to stand up right now. He does want to stand up.
Well, it was interesting, the presentation at first, when I tried to open it for Andrew, said it was in his trash. Then I was able to open it. So you might be having the same snafu.
Well, thank you for allowing us to visit with you this evening. This is our February four meeting agenda typically is when we introduce a new curriculum. And just kind of as a matter of process, what we'll do this evening is, Dr. Regent will kind of walk us through the Unified Arts Curriculum, which includes fine arts, practical arts, health, PE in our gifted program. And then as usual, what we'll do is allow you to kind of per, you know, look, preview that curriculum within Embark. And then we'll come back next month for a final approval for the Unified Arts Curriculum. So without any further delay, Dr. Regent, go.
So this is just a review of the current curriculum cycle. We actually started in the school year of twenty-two, twenty-three. In the fall of twenty-twenty-two, Dr. Tripphammer met with us and we decided to go about some new initiatives that we will talk about later. And we had last school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we worked on initiatives in the fall. And then in the spring of semester twenty-three, we did like more of a deep dive into the curriculum to make sure that we are standards aligned with our national standards, our state standards and the alignment. And we also went over the summer and worked and really fine tuned and worked deeply on our curriculum to make sure it was aligned. Then this fall, we kind of went over it with like a fine-tuned comb polish, made sure it said exactly what we wanted to say. And then in this spring semester, we said, okay, our curriculum is what, the way that we would like it. Here are some materials that we would like to have to supplement and teach that curriculum. So that's that. And then this is just where you can find our curriculum. It's in Embark, like Dr. Tripphammer said, and the link is there. And then that's where you can find business and the field of consumer sciences, gifted, health, music, PE, practical arts, Project Lead the Way and visual arts. And then also the recommended materials that we are requested to help support our.
Yeah, and I'll just interject real quickly. Typically, we come also with a variety of textbooks that the content area is recommending. Remember this, five years ago, we had the kind of same discussion. There really are not, this is not a textbook-driven area of the curriculum. This is a lot, the majority of this is hands-on material. So you're gonna see sewing machines in there for the fax room. We're gonna look at new PE equipment, instruments for music. So it's, it's more equipment-based as opposed to, there's really not a. And we don't, quite frankly, if you want to my honest opinion, we probably don't want a textbook-driven practical arts, fine arts curriculum. We want this to be as hands-on as possible. So when you look at those materials, I just want to give a little context to that.
It will be much more materials that we use. Okay. So some of this change that I had talked earlier about in that fall twenty-twenty-two, we developed priority standards. So Destiny has priority standards for math and ELA and social studies and science, but they don't have them for our core subjects. So Dr. Tripphammer, under his leadership, we kind of decided, yes, we need to have these for our subject areas as well, for our department. So for kindergarten, music, kids have to know a steady beat before I can teach them anything about rhythm. So what are those priority standards that we really need to make sure that we hone in on? That the students have that solid foundation before they can go on to the next level. So by creating those, it really gave us a great K-12 vertical alignment for what's going on. So when they move from the elementary level to middle school, secondary level for music or art, the foundations are already there because the priority standards are, have been taught. And another thing that I'm actually very proud of that our department worked on is a castle framework integration. Castle is a big collaboration for the academic, social and emotional learning. So this collaborative includes universities, it includes K-12 institutions, it includes practitioners of what is good for social, emotional learning. And because it is research-based for the universities and the practitioners, it's considered like the gold star standard for social, emotional learning. And that framework there, I kind of call it like the cogs of the wheel. The self-awareness, the self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills and the social awareness are what we consider as really important to social, emotional learning for when we are teaching our students those things. And what our department has decided is that that's a natural fit for what we do. We are the whole child of subjects, right? We are the ones where we want students to look at artwork that they've made and really make those self-decisions about, do I like this? And if I don't, how do I deal with frustration if I'm not happy with it? Or when they're practicing music, what do I do if I don't make this, if I make mistakes? Those kinds of things. In physical education, you know, it's all about teamwork, how am I working with a team? So we felt that that was a natural integration of what our subject area is and is already embedded into everything that we do. That we wanted to share that in our curriculum and show how those framework standards are integrated into each core subject that we teach and into the units that we teach. So that was something that we worked really hard on and I'm proud that we were able to accomplish this. So I think going forward, we're gonna try to use this integration for other subject areas. So that way they can see really how are we making sure of the whole child being taught. All right, and we have a few courses that we are adding this year. We dropped a business tech class and that was really more based on typing skills and some outdated Microsoft programs. And under the guidance of Ms. Tilly, our business teacher, she really said, our students need an intro to a business class and they need an intro to the marketing class. So she crafted these two semester-long classes that she saw a need for our students to have. And so she's providing that with these additions to the classes at the high school level. And then also for family living, we are adding a class, Human Relations. And that's gonna really focus again on interpersonal relationships, our communication styles, how do we talk to each other? How do we create and nurture healthy relationships? And how do we deal with stress, both personal stress or in our relationships? And again, that goes back to the castle integration. It's just one of those great things that we provide to our students. So those are some classes that we're adding.
Yeah, a question. Is business technology, was it to teach, how to teach typing skills? Is that covered somewhere else?
She, yes. Ms. Tilly said that it is already embedded in a lot of the other curriculums that she's teaching, so. Yes.
We also do key boarding in elementary schools as well.
And then some other just minor changes we tweaked in the curriculum. We looked at our scope and sequences to make sure that they were really made sense and that they follow those priority standards. And that's really about all we have. So what questions do you have for us?
Who all was involved in the, through, from the departments?
Sure. So the music department is myself, Ms. Debbie Spinson and Greg Prender, who's the band director. The art department is Gabrielle Rogers, former Asher, Jamie Davis and Tim Rempel. And the Project Lead the Way is Sarah Piper over there and Jeff Heinrich. In business, we have Ms. Christine Tilly. In facts, field of consumer sciences, Ellie Beaver and PE.
All of the PE teachers, including our new teacher.
Including Ryan Coachlim. He kind of came in on that tail end, so he got to see, he worked a lot with Coach, a lot with Ruby at March twenty to kind of make sure that they were on board together and synchronized in that. And then all of the middle school, health and PE teachers. So Coach Coon, Coach Robin, Coach Gordon, Mr. Gordon is our new health teacher. And then our lead teacher is Tyler Anderson.
All, all the folks that teach these areas are great.
Right, so every person was kind of in charge up there.
And with, in terms of just the budget side of this, this is all going back with, so what you outlined and what we'll look at, Matt's already incorporated, it's all incorporated.
Yeah, we gave that to him and that, you know, and I've shared with him and Dr. Lane. Looked at, I looked at it five years ago. We're, we're a little bit above where we were five years ago, but we're also, I guess inflation is catching up with all of us. And this is a huge, you saw all the subject areas.
We are big consumers, right? Like you think of like PE balls and equipments, that's something that you're gonna have to replenish every curriculum cycle and you're gonna need to kind of think ahead. So unfortunately, that's just the nature of our, our things, you know. Like, I've been lucky to have instruments that are twenty years old because we can keep well care of them, but we still need some that need replacing and whatnot, so.
The one that I was talking to Carrie about, the one that keeps coming up, Ellie Beaver and our fax teacher had come to me a couple of years ago and said, okay, like we're limping along with these sewing machines. And I'm like, keep limping, because this would be the time that we would replenish them. And I think those things are going on at good twenty, twenty-five years old. Kind of like the heaters on the.
But the point is, everything you've outlined here, Matt's taking a look at, it's rolled in and we're not worried about.
Everything is good.
Excellent, thank you.
So two things. I know I, I say this every single time, but I really wish we would look at the resources we have in our community. I wish our kids could learn how to swim. I wish we could use the ice skating that we have right in our back door. You know, you, you have a perfect example, balls have to be placed every single year. Like these kind of resources we have right here, the Y does our after-school care. I am a firm believer, I say it every single time, every kid should learn how to swim. And I think we could tell a story if we started at the elementary level and we worked out a relationship with the Y and it was part of our curriculum. I really think it's huge. The other thing is, have we ever thought about having? The other thing is, have we ever thought about having kids in these curriculum meetings? I think there's so much we can learn from our kids when we're looking at these kind of things, like the intro to business, the intro to marketing, the human relations. I think especially at the high school level, after now having a freshman in college, maybe we could look at having people from the different universities come in and have mock situations where kids are talking to them before they go to college. Because once they go to college, we parents cannot have any interaction. So teaching these kids, if they're not competent, they're not great communicators, how to talk to these professors or to these different advisors before they leave us. So just something, I don't know if it's in this, but I think it's a huge piece once they leave here. And so to me, I hope it's something that we can maybe use in the courses. So.
Any other questions?
I do have a question on the curriculum across the two elementary schools. Is it planned and executed in the same manner?
So we have the same units for sure. How we go about, obviously Ms. Stinson and I are different people. So we do teach things a little bit differently, but the units are the same. So we always have like a, both of us have the winter concert in December. So really that second quarter is really focused on pitch skills and singing skills. Our rhythm is usually based on the set first quarter and things like that. So we do have that kind of alignment and we do talk and we make sure that we are trying to do relatively the same things, but making sure that if we, even if we teach it in a different way, that it's still taught so that the students get the same opportunities.
Well, it really goes back to those priority standards, those in the order.
Right, so since those are, you know, now founded, that we can make sure that that is being taught.
We could definitely go back and look, and I haven't had time. But it would be interesting to see what equipment Mark Twain is ordering and what equipment McGrath is ordering. Because you want to be careful that we want things to be.
And Ms. Stinson and Nigel, we talk, so it should be pretty respectable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Last time we have is, for some reason, we have a board meeting during spring break. Perfect.
Can't make it.
Nothing better to do, but the rest of you might. So wherever you would like to place it as a board, I will be here.
April 2nd.
So we have a, oh, April 2nd?
How about July 2nd?
May 1st works as well.
Keith does not get to vote. So I guess, folks, if you just look at your calendars, looking at the 12th through the 26th.
We're going to have a policy meeting in March.
We do have one pending item. We haven't listed anything else yet.
Okay. We could always hold.
Can we put those together?
Until April for the policy. If you're free, Brian.
Yeah, I think so.
Or people, I guess, who's here and who's not here over spring break.
Not.
You're not here.
So we could change our policy meeting to a board business meeting on the 5th. And we could also take care of one policy if we needed to during that meeting as well.
Oh, that's fine.
Is that too quick to have another meeting on the 5th, Brian, business-wise?
What about, is there going to be anything with N T B that might require a vote between? I'd rather we potentially push because of N T B, the conversation.
I think the better chance.
Good idea.
We won't have the March meeting and then, I mean, we wouldn't have the policy, but then maybe look at like the following week.
The 26th.
So I think late March would be good because I'm just anticipating my own topics.
Move it to next Tuesday then.
Great.
26th then, is that?
Yes, please.
Yep.
All right, we'll post that, publicize it.
Thank you.
That was the superintendent's report.
Okay, that moves us into Board of Education. So an M S B A delegate report. Keith, may I remark anything?
I guess there's not much going on. I noticed on the list there, one of the items is the M S B A spring meeting, which is by Zoom and we pay a fee for the, and I'll have to attend that. So we have to pay the fee, but then everybody else gets to log in too for that same fee. So can you sign us up? That's on March, what day is that?
The 13th, this is.
13th. And then, so anybody's welcome to attend, it's a Zoom. That's about it.
Thank you. Board committee updates. We do have, I'll start for finance. We do have a meeting the first week of March to meet as a finance facilities group.
Communications, we're working on a middle of March timeframe to get a meeting together. Spring break is kind of, and my schedule is kind of conflicting with that, so.
And we don't have one right now for curriculum. We actually had two last month, so I'm not saying we need to add one. We had so much to discuss, we had. So no pressure, Alex, I'm not saying you need to get on it right away.
Okay, great. And then we have a list of upcoming events you can take a look at. I think one, two, to mark on your calendar, if you can make it, the Senior Citizens branch on Thursday, March 28th. At nine o'clock here at the middle school cafeteria, always a great time if board members are able to make it.
I came last year both as a board member and a senior citizen. It was very, very well attended. That's great. That's a great event just for public relations. It's all people matter.
Sometimes.
So if you want to go, let Kate know.
On the election, I'm sorry. I was going to say on the election front, are we doing anything? Are we, like, you know, before we gave up space for the election, is there any community space that we're giving up for them to hold election? Like polling place, so that's done?
Not our space, yeah. All right.
I move that we adjourn and move into closed session for the reasons stated in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, real coffee?
Yes.
Ryan Johnson?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
For coming tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
If you go out the door and turn left, it should be to the left, left and left.